Good. Okay. Well, good morning, everyone. Commissioner Ludgood will not be with us this morning, so we're gonna, we're gonna move forward and start the meeting. Do we have anyone scheduled to speak today?
Mr. Jerry Luker with Turnerville Water signed in, in case y'all have questions for item number 24, but he didn't have a proactive statement to start the meeting with.
Okay.
I think if Jerry Luker showed up, he should have had a speech ready. Oh, yeah, Jerry.
Well, you need to come up with a question or two.
Yeah, I'll come up with, I'll come up with something.
Okay. All right, Eddie?
Ask the commissioners to consider the following. One, approve a list of claims. Two, hold public hearings, so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statements of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance report. Three, hold public hearings, so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard regarding public safety concerns as to the operations of JJKJ LLC doing business as The Rolling Tide and also known as The Alabama Bar and Lounge located on Airport Boulevard, and consider taking any appropriate action. Four, hold public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding the proposed substantial amendment to the program year 2024 Action Plan for the Home Program. This information has been available to the public since February 12, 2025. Five, adopt substantial amendment to the program year 2024 Action Plan for the Home Program following the comment period and public hearing. Six, rescind action of the Mobile County Commission in the January 27th minutes, Agenda Item Number 22, approving amendment to the sub-receiving agreement with Housing First for rapid rehousing services under the Emergency Solutions Grant to extend the term from January 31st to May 31st. Seven, approve professional services agreement with catalysts in the amount of $2,250 for rebuilding indexes in the landmark database along with creating a maintenance job that will rebuild indexes regularly. Eight, authorize letter of support to the Alabama State Council on the Arts on behalf of Strickland Youth Center for grant application for its Strickland Youth Center courtroom mural and children's gallery project. Nine, authorize grant application to Alabama State Council on the Arts for funding on behalf of Strickland Youth Center courtroom mural and children's gallery project. Ten, approve declaration of restrictive covenants, release of existing flood claims and waiver of future flood claims by any current or subsequent owners of the burdened property located on 3780 River Road in Theodore by the Annesley Family Irrevocable Trust. Eleven, approve application of Sherudy Corporation for Lounge Retail Liquor Class II license for Owl's Liquor on Howells Ferry Road in Sims.
Is that a liquor store or is that a bar? It says lounge, but then it also says retail liquor. Says Owl's Liquor, I was just curious.
I thought it was a liquor store.
It just said lounge in it, so I didn't, Class II lounge. Just curious because I looked at it on a map. And I hate to say that I'm gonna be a little bit more, put a little bit more scrutiny on these lounges, particularly in residential areas where there, and there's a lot of houses around that, but if it's a liquor store for all premises, that's fine.
I think it was a liquor store when it said package.
Package store, yeah.
Yeah, when it said package, when it's a liquor store.
That says lounge, I didn't know.
Right. Is there currently, there's currently a, an application in effect right now? Is this a reapplication of another?
It's a new application.
New application, okay.
That's fine. Would you just find out if it's a, if it's a lounge bar? Or if it's a liquor store? Makes a difference for me. Thank you. Sorry.
We'll get more information on that. Twelve, approve grant agreement from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for the Stop Violence Against Women Act Prosecution Program in the amount of $41,217.2 with a local match of $13,739.1 and authorize the execution of all associated documents. Thirteen, approve sponsorship agreement with Jack and Jill of America Mobile Chapter in the amount of $1,000 from District 1 Education Funds for its Lay Butilian Military Dinner Dance. Fourteen, approve appropriation contract with Spencer Westlon Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of $20,000 from District 2 Education Funds for kindergarten classroom furniture and achievement engagement awards for Spencer Westlon Elementary School. Fifteen, approve sponsorship agreement with University of South Alabama Jag Girls in the amount of $1,000 from District 2 Education Funds for its brunch and bingo fundraiser. Sixteen, we will revise the language as follows. Approve a preparation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $9,945.24 from District 1 Education Funds to help support the Callaway Smith Middle School Band Program. Seventeen, approve sponsorship agreement with the Community Foundation of South Alabama in the total amount of $1,500 for its annual luncheon with funds divided as follows. Eighteen, approve appropriation contract with Mobile Medical Museum in the total amount of $5,000 for educational programs with funds divided as follows. Nineteen, approve appropriation contract with Mary B. Austin Elementary School Parent Teacher Association in the amount, in the amount of $20,000 from District 2 Education Funds to purchase and install an outdoor LED message sign for Mary B. Austin Elementary School. Twenty, approve sponsorship agreement with Afriktown Plateau Pacers in the amount of $1,000 from District 1 Education Funds for its annual Women's Empowerment Spring Tea. Twenty-one, authorize acceptance of transfer of conservation land from the Nature Conservancy to the Mobile County Commission and authorize execution of all associated documents.
Tina, where, where is this property?
Good morning. It's on Portisville Bay, near Codin, near the mouth of Bayou Codin.
So going into a, are we gonna, what are we gonna do with it?
It's a, it's a high priority, environmentally sensitive parcel to acquire. There may be some limited access. There'll be some assessments on cultural resources as well.
So is it going into a conservation trust or anything?
It'll be a part of the county's conservation land management program. And we have other parcels near there.
Okay. Thank you. It just wasn't in the agenda item. I wasn't sure what track that was. Thank you.
Twenty-two, approve contract amendment number 10 to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Watermark Design Group to add boardwalk inspection for Mobile River Delta Marina and Campground.
Tina, sorry, what, what is that for?
What is Matthew's?
All right, Matthew.
Good morning, commissioners. This, this item is to authorize Thompson Engineering to perform an inspection of the existing boardwalk at River Delta. It's got some structural damage. It has been closed for a period of time. And so this will be the first step to repairing that.
So I know that park's not in my district. I know that. I understand that. And I know Commissioner Ludgood isn't here today. How much, how much are we paying Thompson to do that inspection?
It, it's about $25,000. And that is to inspect about a quarter mile of boardwalk. So they'll have a boat and they will actually physically inspect every member of the boardwalk.
Did we not have a contractor come look at that? A qualified contractor come look at, I hate to ask questions about her park while she's not here, but did we not have a qualified, certified, bonded, insured contractor go look at that and give us a price on repairing the damage there without having to pay Thompson Engineering to tell us what he's already told us for free and gave us a price?
Well, so he didn't do a full inspection, but we did have a contractor look at it. And the price that we got to repair the full boardwalk was greater than the amount that would allow us to do work with the contractor without bidding it. So we'd have to prepare bid documents to have the full boardwalk repaired.
I thought he was below, but I guess.
We got a quote from a contractor that was less than $100,000, but it was not to repair the full boardwalk. It was just a portion of it.
Well, it was a boardwalk, but not including repairing the handrails or something like?
It was not full length. So it was just a, a portion of the boardwalk.
It just seems like sometimes we spend money that's unnecessary, just my opinion.
I will say the original fee proposal that we got from Thompson was quite a bit more. And so we negotiated that down quite a bit from, if I remember correctly, it was in the $60,000.
Yeah, well, I remember that. I'm, I guess I asked so many questions because my parents have stayed at River Delta in their RV. And one of their favorite activities, particularly my mother, is to walk on the boardwalk and drink her coffee every morning. And so the last time they were there, it was closed. And so that's why I got concerned about the condition of the boardwalk. I just, I feel like what's gonna happen here, I'll just make a prediction. No, I won't. I'll just tell you I told you so later. But I mean, we're gonna end up spending millions of dollars to replace a boardwalk that could be, in my opinion, repaired for a lot less money, but that's just my opinion.
Is it the, is the recommendation of Environmental Services to have this inspection done so that you can go to the next step for repair work? Is that? That's where we are? Okay. And without that inspection, we would not be able to move to the next step?
Correct.
I understand all that, but.
And we, we tried to go down the path of having a contractor do the work and it just, it has not worked out. It's more, it's more expensive than we would be able to do without bidding the project.
Thank you. I understand. I just wanted to get that off my chest. I feel like sometimes we spend money that's unnecessary. And I think this is one of those cases, in my opinion. I know what, I know legally what we have to do, but I just think it's unfortunate that we're about to spend a million, millions of dollars probably on a boardwalk that could be fixed for a little over $100,000, in my opinion.
Hopefully, when we bid it, we'll have enough contractors that bid on the job. We've actually seen an increase in contractors' interest in projects, so hopefully we'll get a good price on it.
Thank you, Matthew.
Okay.
Twenty-three, approve contract amendment number two to the Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan Contract with Stokes Consulting Group to add general implementation support for the Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan and technical support for the Multiple Property Documentation Forum Project for the Civil Rights Movement. This amendment will also extend the period of performance to March 31st, 2026. I believe. There is no cost associated with this amendment. Twenty-four, adopt resolution approving application of Turnerville Water and Fire Protection District to amend its certificate of incorporation pursuant to Alabama Code to amend the district's service area. Twenty-five, approve three-year service agreement with Birmingham Hyde and Tallo Company for cooking oil recovery in Mobile County Parks at no cost to the county.
Tina?
Yeah.
Sorry, what?
That, that one bears some explanation as well.
Where are we recovering cooking oil from?
The concession stands use cooking oil. And this just collected, and it's no cost, but it has the word agreement in it. So we put it before the commission to authorize.
So this is for like?
Collecting used cooking.
West Mobile County Park and places with concession stands.
Wherever there's a, a park with a.
Is from the grease trap? Is it, is it collected from the grease trap? How is that?
I'm sorry, I'll have to get back to you on the details of that.
We don't have to know the technical details, but I'm just assuming that's from the waste from cooking.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Twenty-six, consider taking the following action on bids. Twenty-seven, approve renewal of subscription agreement with Clarus International in the amount of $2,646 for FileMaker Database of Juvenile Detention Records for the James T. Strickland Youth Center. Twenty-eight, approve renewal of subscription agreement with SHI International Corporation in the amount of $18,069.29 for lease query standard package records up to 243 for the County Commission. Twenty-nine, approve renewal of maintenance agreement with Unity Fiber in the amount of $4,378.2 for two core routers for the County Commission. Thirty, approve renewal of licensed subscription agreement with TSA in the amount of $2,945.44 for the VM Data Platform Advanced Universal for the County Commission. Thirty-one, approve annual renewal of licensed subscription agreement with Unity Fiber in the amount of $5,179.60 for Cisco Webex for the County Commission. Thirty-two, approve renewal agreement with ThinkGuard in the total amount of $11,383.4 for Cisco Secure Email Cloud Advantage in the amount of $9,898.25 and Cisco Enhanced Support for Cisco Email Security in the amount of $1,484.84 for the County Commission. Thirty-three, approve renewal of maintenance and support agreement with Linear Systems in the amount of $6,500 for DEMS software and equipment for the Sheriff's Office. Thirty-four, approve renewal of maintenance agreement with Timekeeping Systems in the amount of $14,345.25 for Guard One Real-Time at Metro Jail. Thirty-five, approve renewal of subscription agreement with RecDesk in the amount of $2,950 for RecDesk Recreation and Parks Software for the County Parks. Thirty-six, approve renewal of subscription agreement with Terminex Commercial for Liquid Defense Systems at Camp One in the amount of $593.25 and James T. Strickland Youth Center in the amount of $639.45. Thirty-seven, approve amending 2019 Capital Improvement Plan to create Project Whistler Bicycle Trail. The budget for this project is in the amount of $13,174.64. This amendment creates the new project with Whistler Bicycle Trail and allocates funding for the budget from the 2019 Capital Improvement Plan. And commissioners, there's one add-on this morning. Add-on number one, approve grant agreement from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for the Stop Violence Against Women Act Prosecution Program in the amount of $34,217.24 with a local match in the amount of $11,405.67 and authorize execution of all associated documents.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Anderson?
Good morning, commissioners. Item one, approve agreement with Alabama Power Company to provide power for six new streetlights at the new roundabout intersection in Howells Ferry Road at Fire Tower Road. Number two, approve and adopt a mile program application from Rocky Freeman of the Rock and Roll Offs for the adoption of a segment of Schillinger Road North from 2035 Schillinger Road North to 1401 Schillinger Road North for approximately one mile.
Kim, back up to number one, we're still opening that tomorrow?
We are hoping for tomorrow, possibly Monday, but within the next few days, yes, ma'am.
Okay. If you can let me know just as soon as, as we figure that out. Oh, we're gonna do that regardless.
You should be able to do that regardless.
Okay. Well, I know everybody's waiting, so we're excited about that. Thank you.
Number three, approve preliminary plat only of Southwood Subdivision off Johnson Road South and Westlake Road North.
Excuse me, Kim. Were that, were they, I don't know if I need to ask Matthew or Tim about this, but is this the subdivision that had the issues with the runoff that was crossing Westlake Road or Johnson over there? Did they ever get all that fixed?
I want Tim to speak to that, but not that I'm aware of.
Did you go out there? I know, I know that I went out, Tina went out, and Matthew? Did you go with us, Matthew? I don't remember.
This is directly adjacent to that development, so.
To the east?
To the west.
There's so many subdivisions that I can't keep up with.
That whole quadrant right there is.
Okay. So this isn't the one that was, was having the issue with the?
No, but it is adjacent to it. It's in that area.
Okay. Did we get that settled on the silt?
Yes, we did.
Oh, that's right. I did. Jerry might have a question he can answer. I forgot. He was their engineer too.
Yeah, he is engineering.
We get that taken care of?
All that has been resolved, to my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you. It just hasn't rained enough out there recently to, to know. So I guess the next time it rains, I'll go look at it, Jerry, and I'll let you know if you got it resolved. Thank you.
Number four, approve preliminary and final plat of Lumpkin Place First Edition off Ashton Road, preliminary and final plat of Elsie Place off Dawes Road, and preliminary and final plat of Gaston Acres off Gaston Loop Road. Number five, approve final plat only of Theodore Crossing off Krill Road and Lundey Road.
Could we vote on, could we go back to number four? And I don't necessarily know if we need, could vote on all four of those, but it, have we made all the proper legal notifications that we could vote on the Gaston Acres subdivision, or do we need to wait till Monday?
We will need to wait till Monday.
Okay. Thank you. I just know that that's been a holdup for, for these folks for a while. Thank you.
Okay. Number six, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and easements from the following property owners for the following projects. Number seven, award bid to HCL Contracting for Project Horse Drive Great Drain Basin Pave in the city of Creola for their low bid in the amount of $371,462. And this is combination Pago and CDBG funding. Number eight, award bid to Gibson Construction Services LLC for Project City of Pritchard Streets, Washtown Avenue Bridge Replacement for their low bid in the amount of $849,883.60. And this is another combination project between Engineering and CDBG Grants Department. Number nine, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreements in the total amount of $1,700 for Project Bass Drive, Bass Drive, Rim Drive, and Stripe Drive Great Drain Basin Paves follows. Number 10, assigning a contract for professional engineering services for design only for Project Georgia Avenue West Great Drain Basin Pave to Merkory and Williams. And this is another combination project between Pago and CDBG. Number 11, accept report from the county engineer pertaining to the petition for private road, dirt road maintenance for Deborah Lane, 510 linear feet, and Roger Road, 1,360 linear feet. In accordance with Act 2019-307, the commission may consider funding the preliminary engineering cost for the total amount of 1,807 linear feet of qualifying roadway. And this was the only petition that we received this year.
Has there been a meeting with the, the property owners, the, the people on Deborah Lane about the, the costs that they would incur? I mean, has that been explained? Because before the county goes to the point of expending this money, I think it's important that the property owners understand that, what the estimated cost to them will be. I mean, it may or may not deter or make them decide, you know, whether they're still interested to pursue it. But I think that that should be done before the county expends the money on the front end and then have them say, no, we're not gonna participate. It's, we don't wanna spend that amount of money. And so we're stuck with having spent the preliminary.
Yes, ma'am. That's a good point, and we will set that up.
Where is Deborah Lane and Rogers Road?
It is off Quail Road, off Irvington-Milobattery Highway. And Deborah Lane is already partially paved where it comes off of Quail, and this is a continuation of that. And then Roger is off of Deborah.
Is it, is it the paved part, private pave, or?
Number seven, award bid to HCL Contracting for Project Hurst Drive Great Drain Basin Pave in the city of Creola for their low bid in the amount of $371,462, and this is combination Pago and CDBG funding. Number eight, award bid to Gibson Construction Services LLC for Project City of Pritchard Streets, Wasland Avenue Bridge Replacement for their low bid in the amount of $849,883.60, and this is another combination project between Engineering and CDBG Grants Department. Number nine, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreements in the total amount of $1,700 for Project Bass Drive, Rim Drive, and Stripe Drive Great Drain Basin Pave as follows. Number 10, assigning a contract for professional engineering services for design only for Project Georgia Avenue West Great Drain Basin Pave to Merkory and Williams, and this is another combination project between Pago and CDBG. Number 11, accept report from the county engineer pertaining to the petition for private road, dirt road maintenance for Deborah Lane, 510 linear feet, and Roger Road, 1,360 linear feet. In accordance with Act 2019-307, the commission may consider funding the preliminary engineering cost for the total amount of 1,807 linear feet of qualifying roadway, and this was the only petition that we received this year.
Has there been a meeting with the, the property owners, the people on Deborah Lane about the, the costs that they would incur? I mean, has that been explained? Because before the county goes to the point of expending this money, I think it's important that the property owners understand that, what the estimated cost to them will be. I mean, it may or may not deter or make them decide, you know, whether they're still interested to pursue it, but I think that that should be done before the county expends the money on the front end, and then have them say, no, we're not gonna participate, it's, we don't wanna spend that amount of money. And so we're stuck with having spent the preliminary.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am, that's a good point, and we will set that up.
Where is Deborah Lane and Rogers Road?
It is off Quail Road, off Irvington Mallabatri Highway, and Deborah Lane is already partially paved where it comes off of Quail, and this is a continuation of that, and then Roger is off of Deborah.
Is it the paved part, private pave, or county maintained?
I believe the paved portion is county maintained, but I'll confirm that.
But, but the unpaved, the petition on the private road, that's, there's a private portion of Deborah Lane then, so that's what we're talking about here?
Yes, ma'am, that continues off the end of the paved portion.
It looks like Deborah Lane and Rogers Road.
Right, because the, the property owners, according to the way this is set up, are responsible for paying for any kind of utility relocation, right-of-way acquisition.
Yes, ma'am.
Culverts, too.
Culverts, right, and that's, that can get rather costly.
Okay, well, we will set that meeting up, and I'll let you get back with you on that.
Thank you.
Number 12, approve assigning a contract for professional engineering services for CE&amp;I only for Project Bellingrath Road Safety Improvements Phase Two to Kimmely Horn. Number 13, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement on Moore's Road in the total amount of $7,220 for Moore's Road Great Drain Basin Pave to be added as follows, and that's all we got.
All right, nothing else? Commissioner, any comments? No? Okay. All right, well, I have a few here that Cherie was kind enough to provide me. We have two events happening on Saturday, February the 22nd. The first is Rich's Car Wash and Cumulus Broadcasting Gulf Coast Pet Adoption Festival, and they apparently chose the Mobile County Animal Shelter this year. It's no charge to the county, and the event sponsors will be there. The first 20 adoptions will be sponsored for free. It will happen from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and it will be at the Mobile County Animal Shelter. They'll be broadcast, Cumulus will be broadcasting live. They will have a dog costume contest, which, which is always fun, and bakery items for people and pets. Everything is sponsored and the event is free, and as of today, we have 40 adoptable dogs and puppies, and over 20 of those are puppies, no cats, they are all pulled by, the cats were all pulled by rescue this week, okay? The second event is Mobile County will have Operation Clean, the second Clean Sweep of 2025. It will take place from 7:30 AM to 1:30 PM at 7195 Half Mile Road in Irvington, and Mobile County residents can drop off household discards and yard debris for free, but they have to have proof of residency. And also Keep Mobile Beautiful will be on-site to accept regular household recycling, which includes cardboard, glass, plastic aluminum, and soft plastic bags. And, and Cherie's got a fun fact here, though. Through Operation Clean Sweep, Mobile County Department of Environmental Enforcement will properly dispose of, or recycle tons of materials. In 2024, through seven OCS events, 204,000 pounds of scrap metal, 3,685 tires, and 32,488 pounds of electronics were picked up for recycling. That's, that's, that's substantial, that's impressive. On March, on Monday, March the 24th, we will have the Greek flag raising at Government Plaza, it'll be at 9:00 AM. We invite you all out to join us for that, and for about 20 years now, the Greek flag has been raised this time of the year to commemorate the Independence Day for Greece, and, and I at one time knew that the date of that is sometime 1823 or something like that, but anyway, a, a large contingent of the Greek community comes out, and we raise the flag, and they sing the Greek National Anthem, and it's, it's always a good event, so we invite you to join us. And that's it. Anything else?
I typed it incorrectly, it's Hubert Pierce Road. I typed it wrong.
Okay.
I typed it wrong.
Strike that, it is not Half Mile Road in Irvington, it is Hubert Pierce Road.
In West Mobile, so my apologies.
All right, if that's it, nothing else, then we will adjourn this meeting today, and we will see you on Monday.